Welcome to the December seventh Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'd please stand and join us in the pleasure of the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded. We do have a joint meeting with the library trustees scheduled for six thirty. We're waiting on one more member.
No, she's here.
Uh, we need four.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we're gonna enter into executive session. So, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. You will be returning to open session to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation, specifically West Meadow LLC versus the town of West Bridgewater Planning Board, since in my opinion as chair strategizing in open session would have a detrimental effect on the town. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes.
Kennyhan, yes. Welcome back to open session. Next on the agenda, we're gonna do review the first half of the calendar year twenty twenty-three for meetings and other dates. So is there a motion to approve this tentatively as the calendar for the first half of next year?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I just wanna note that we did change in January till the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. So we won't have it the first and the third.
Yep, okay.
So, and then, um, the time capsule's gonna be on February fifteenth, and that will be the only thing that should be on the agenda.
Okay, cool, thank you.
So our next meeting is...
January eleventh.
So that's different than what we have.
Yeah, it'll be the second or fourth.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have a request from the Council on Aging for the Senior Tax Workoff Program. There are some increases. Fairly significant. Typically, we just do minimum wage times seventy hours. This one is more than that. And then also, and what was the other item that increased the minimum?
Um, so she's looking for the abatement to go from a thousand to fifteen hundred. So she's looking for it to go up five hundred dollars a year.
And then is there... Did the, um, income change as well?
The income, um, Christine, can you just flip, um, flip, uh, to me? So the guidelines, um, income limit used to be sixty-two thousand for a single, and the income limit now, the new one is sixty-two. The old guidelines were fifty-eight thousand. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
And other than that, everything, the married income isn't, would be ninety-three, and the old one was eighty-eight thousand, and the assets could be, is no more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Not including their primary residence.
Correct, not including their primary residence.
And then the total amount allocated to this program, that increase as well, right?
I do not have that figure with me.
So it's forty-five thousand now. I don't know what it was last year. I think it was... My personal recommendation is instead of the fifteen hundred, make it one thousand fifty dollars, which would be the roughly the seventy hours times the minimum wage which we've done pretty much every year past that I know of.
So ju- just a question. You said the hourly, wait, I was a little confused. The hourly rate went up and the exemption amount went up. Were those the same number, or did they...
So right now, it's like nine hundred and ninety-something dollars, right, that you can, the abatement is per year?
Okay.
This would be increasing that from, say, call it a thousand, a thousand to fifteen hundred.
Okay. All right.
So someone obviously would get fifteen hundred off their taxes. Versus a thousand.
Isn't this usually...
And the hours did go up too, from a hundred and twenty to, I think they work a hundred hours now. It would go up another twenty hours.
Don't we usually vote at town meeting on the abatement amount?
No, last year the board voted in a regular, set board meeting.
There's a, um, something for veterans, something for the blind. That's an automatic one. It's not the workoff program.
Yeah, okay.
Why wouldn't you want to increase it to fifteen hundred? Why do you want the one thousand fifty?
Correct. That would essentially be keeping it the same. It would be the same and then just adjust it for the increased wage.
So you don't wanna take her recommendation of fifteen hundred? Is there a reason?
Well, that just means that everyone else picks up the tab for that difference. I mean, if more people can get a tax break, that means everyone else is picking up the remainder of...
Do we have enough people to get that much work done?
Last year we had a twenty-one, twenty-one year individual.
And they had to increase that because one year they ran out of.
Correct. Usually they, they do usually fill up, but I know last year they had twenty-one individuals.
And the year before that, they had to refuse people, so... So they're, you're at a thousand fifty, they're asking for fifteen hundred?
Correct. I mean, it's a good program, but I just think we can't get, let it get too rich. Otherwise, then it starts to impact everyone else.
So because of, I mean, the...
Aren't they helping the other departments? And that, in theory, would reduce the FTEs needed by the department?
So I'm looking at it more, I mean, you, maybe, but realistically, I don't think a couple more hours a year is gonna change the FTE requirement. I mean, most of these aren't a position that we'd be hiring for otherwise.
Could be filled just by an hour or two overtime. I mean, if you have someone who's experienced with the job, you don't need to show them what to do. But the, I'm disagreeing with you partially. I, I, I'm not sure about fifteen hundred. I think that's a little rich going from nine hundred and something to fifteen hundred. But we're in a, a different kind of economic world right now. So considering with the way prices are going on everything and the value they're providing, maybe go to twelve hundred with the understanding...
Right in the middle?
Hmm.
Twelve fifty, maybe, right in the middle, just to get between and make, I mean, what am I talking about? Twelve hundred, twelve fifty?
Yeah, but so, would you...
I wouldn't agree with that person. I mean, they...
You wouldn't, or you would?
I would not.
Oh, okay.
You're just putting more of the tax burden on everyone else. It's, I mean, these people are getting an abatement. They're getting a reduced tax, but then that thousand dollars, everyone else will be responsible for covering. No matter what, we have to raise the same amount of money. So that just means someone else is gonna pay for it.
But they're, they're not just getting a break. They're working.
Correct.
You know, they're, they're providing a service for the break. So we're not just giving away.
Yep.
So I, I don't kinda see it the same way. You know, I'm not sure these would be FTE positions if they didn't do it. I don't think that would happen. But I also think they're providing a service. So I, I just would prefer something like this to been presented differently with more explanation as to why, what thought process was. So I wouldn't, I, I would be willing to make a motion to increase it to one thousand two fifty with reconsideration that it may go down next year.
I don't know if I understand that last part.
So I, just so that they understand, typically you see numbers go up every year. I think they need to know upfront, this, it may go up this year, but next year it may go down.
Oh, revert back to...
Yes.
Realistically, I'll never.
Huh?
Realistically, though, I'll never. I mean, we're taking a vote just for this year. And I mean, I don't think that would ever happen.
Yeah, wow.
But I'm fine with that, second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
No, all right. Next item, renewal of annual licenses. So we have entertainment, public amusement, class one, two, and three, graduate pair, and common vic. Those are all listed in the packet. Is there a motion to approve those pending all inspections and applications are complete?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have? Okay, I thought I just saw someone. All right, so we'll go back to item one, the joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees. So if you guys wanna just open your meeting officially.
Deborah Lancaster, I'm the chairperson, and I open the meeting at six fifty-five. And on, yeah, is it six fifty-nine?
A little later.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, okay.
So we have someone who's interested in joining the board. If you'd just like to introduce yourself briefly.
Sure. My name's Kelly Caprillion. My husband and I have been residents of West Bridgewater since nineteen ninety-eight. Two children that have gone through the school system. Last one now is graduating this year and involved in the town primarily through the children's activities. You know, helping at Spring Street School, helping with the Cub Scouts, you know, a lot of history with Christine and Scott. And now that, you know, my oldest is in college and my son's graduating. He just did his Eagle Scout project. He did the dock over off at Pratt's Landing.
Oh, I just walked down there. That came out beautiful.
Thank you, yeah. He did a lot. That was a big, big project, so happy it's done. But now that they're older, there are other ways to volunteer my time. And, you know, Scott had reached out as there was a vacancy on the library trustees committee. And so I just thought that might be interesting, so...
And I've known Kelly for a long time. She was instrumental in the Scouts, the, the whole pancake breakfast at St. Thomas.
St. Anne's.
St. Anne's was all her idea. She, she orchestrated the whole thing and organized it. And I know both of her kids, both very high-performing kids. One is at Eagle Scout, another was captain of the cross-country team at West Bridgewater. So highly recommend her.
And she's come to the last two meetings even though she can't vote.
That's dedication.
Okay, thank you very much for volunteering. So is there, if you guys wanna make a motion first, or, and you guys can vote first, it does require a roll call vote.
Okay. Scott, why don't you make the motion?
I make a motion to have Kelly Caprillion, I guess, backfill the library trustee position.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if you can just, the roll call, if you just state your name and yes.
Deborah Lancaster, yes.
Scott Ames, yes.
Christine, let's guess.
Christopher Lawrence, yes. Thank you, yours from our board.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes.
And Kennyhan, yes. Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
We applaud you for trying this.
No worries, thank you.
Yes, appreciate the participation. You want me to go?
No.
Thank you.
They, they win.
Good night.
Bye. You too.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item is the annual liquor license renewal. Same as the last one, pending inspections and complete applications.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ABCC has submitted their seasonal population estimate. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Up next is the Board of Selectmen's twenty-four budget memo. Seven years past, we've done a level service. I think we might have done a level funded one year maybe. So this is our chance to decide on the message to send to departments to request their budget submissions.
I would say level funded.
I like how it, I like the level service. We need to be able to provide the same service, but figure out what it costs. That's what we'd be asking for, right?
At level services, you would, same services and pretty much what the cost comes in at, it comes in at. You review it and you can, you know, discuss the budget and cut out, but the focus isn't on maintaining fina-, uh, financial limits. It's on maintaining what we have as services.
That's what I'd be interested in. I don't know what you guys are interested in.
I don't think a level funded realistically would happen. Like, I mean, and I don't like asking for something knowing that we're gonna get responses that don't follow it. I mean, I don't think it would be possible to ask every department to come in at exactly what their budget was for this current year.
I don't think it's intended to limit them. I think it's more intended to give them a goal. And I wouldn't expect them to come in with a zero percent increase. I would expect an increase. But I think they have to look carefully at what they intend to do this year. Are they planning to add more people? And how do they support adding more people? You know, if it's a, if it's a nice-to-have list, then this, I don't think this is the year for a nice-to-have list.
Well, I think that's level services. What's it gonna take to provide the level of service expected from the taxpayers?
Yeah. If we request a level funded budget, we should literally take them in the trash and, or take them and throw them in the trash if they are a penny over what this year's current budget is. And we're not gonna do that.
But we're not gonna do that. We never have done that.
So why ask for something that we know isn't gonna be followed? We should ask for what we expect.
So why are, why do we just give a one-sentence, I mean, a one-sentence message? It really doesn't cover it. It's kinda static. Why, why aren't we explaining really what we're looking for? That we'd like the town to be able to maintain the services that they have, but the focus should be, you know, there has to be strict focus to, to the budgets overall and the financial effect on the town. I mean, the, the tax rate just went up. And why does it go up? Because of the budgets. Every, everyone thinks, you know, well, I shouldn't say everyone, 'cause it's not true. But people feel that we increase, we make all these decisions and we are the cause of the tax rate going up. It's the budgets. The town votes on the budgets. Not, I mean, we, we recommend them. We have an opportunity to cut them. We have an opportunity to add to them if we wanted to. But I, I think it needs to be a little clearer budget. I, I mean, it's not worth me, it's not worth going back and forth on. I'd be willing to go with whatever you want. I just think it should be a little more than our message to you is that we want a level services or a level funded budget.
It doesn't have to say any of that. It can just be, we request your...
Budget.
Budget.
Period.
What you want, really. Like, I mean, 'cause...
It could say anything.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be one of those two. It's just requesting what they requested, essentially.
So I guess just prepare a good faith budget with, with the understanding that finances are tight for many of our residents. Or something thereof.
Which really shouldn't be any different than any other year.
Except gas is four dollars a gallon and people are struggling to pay for home heating fuel. And we haven't seen this in a long time.
Yeah, but that's the problem with the level funded is the gas for the police cars went up as well.
Right, but even when we've had level funded budgets, those lines have gone up and they've explained that. That's something that's out of their control. They cannot control the price of gas. They can't control heating the building. They can control hiring more people. And even though we've said in the past level services, they've come in with additional hires because there's a need for it. And there's always been a need for it. This just isn't the year to say there is a need for it and I wanna hire more people. If they have an open position, fill it.
Okay. So is there a motion for the message?
Make a motion that we say level service? I'm not really sure what, what you would like it to say. I'm still coming back around to level service. It sounds like that's what we're asking for, is present what you need, not what you want.
Again, the department heads, they do this budget every year, so they, I mean, they know what they, they need to do to get back to us with the le-, the budget. So whether it, I don't think it makes a huge difference how it's worded.
Mm-hmm.
Um, usually this is the, the letter that we've sent out in the past.
I make a motion that we approve the letter as presented.
Is there a second?
I have to read the letter.
The only thing I'd like to change is the thing with printing them and giving hard copies. Should be able to do Excel and make it easier and...
Yes, absolutely.
I'll second it.
Is it too soon to set it up as like a Google sheet and each one log in separately?
They do, so it is, well, it's not in Google, so it's in Excel. So I send them, um, I send them...
What, a master in each person?
Exactly, so a master goes to every person.
So you don't have to do updating?
Nope, it's all by email. I send to the...
Is this the same letter, same words we send every time? We just change it from level serv-, yeah, pretty, so that's what I mean. It's, there's...
Well, since I've been here, I don't, I can't speak before. I've been here, but since I've been here, um, I think this, we, we've sent this particular letter out two years in a row. Prior to that, it was the level funding.
We did it one year.
Yeah, one year was level funding.
It just, right, that's the only thing we changed. Here's the form letter with the words changed.
But what's submitted is never gonna change, no matter what we write in this letter. Well, I mean, most departments submit very well put together budgets. It's not, they're not asking for anything crazy typically. I mean, I don't think it's really gonna change anyone's, what anyone's gonna put in their budget based on how we write this letter.
All right, I seconded it.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. The budget due date, Linda, do you have a...
Yes, so we're looking, um, for January eighteenth excluding the schools. So the schools will not have their budget to us until sometime in March.
Okay. And that's because they have to hold a public hearing and all that.
Correct, they have to hold a public hearing. And we're looking at doing our first, uh, budget hearing this year on January twenty-fifth. So it's a little early, 'cause our tentative date for town meeting, we're looking at May eighth.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve January eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. The discussing vote on Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Preservation Restriction, Clinton and Cynthia Howard, two eighty-four River Street. Linda, so this is just for the state, so the state will be making a payment for essentially land rights, or I don't know the exact language.
So this is...
And we have a hundred and twenty days.
A hundred and twenty days or sixty. It's one twenty or sixty, I believe.
They were asking to trim it down to sixty?
So normally, yes, 'cause they're requesting for sixty. Normally, it's a hundred and twenty.
Okay, are there any feelings on that, or a motion, or...
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
For the sixty or the one twenty?
Sixty.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Ramco Survey Stakes, um, is going to be doing some work at Paul Memorial Park. Is there a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And approve the meeting minutes of October nineteenth?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And accept for review the meeting minutes of November second?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Mark McLeod has, um, applied to be the alternate member of the zoning board of appeals. Is there a motion to approve, Mark, for that?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
So he is, um, this is taking, uh, Keith Porges resigned. So the term will end on sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and then we will appoint him after, um, for another five years.
Okay, thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other comment, period, anyone? Town of River Street's report.
Hi, Forest Street Bridge closure. Um, just announcing that we, they, um, DOT came out and did an inspection and they recommended us closing the bridge. So it is currently closed. And you can see by the pictures, there is some corrosion on the metal pipes. And it looks pretty rough.
Let's, do you know what the next step is, Linda?
I think they're, do they try, I, I believe they're trying to get some funding to repair it.
From the state?
Yeah.
DOT?
Yeah. Next is the town hall will be closed, um, tomorrow, December eighth, for active shooter training. The police department will be handling this training. And going forward, we'll have one also at the COA with DPW, the library, and water, because it's specific to their, um, facility. So we're gonna do them separately. I'd like to say thank you to Rob Casper, our health agent. He's, um, got a community compact IT grant in the amount of fifty thousand to digitalize his records. So his office, he's gonna be digitalizing most of his records. There's just a few that, um, unfortunately can't be digitalized and he has to keep the hard copies.
Oh, that's great. You said fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Now, does his department also request the money from the CPA funds?
I don't remember.
No, they stopped doing that because they weren't, it wasn't supposed to happen.
Oh, well, that's great.
So they think all departments stopped doing that.
That's great that they found a graph that does it.
So that will, you know, really help out with, um, the condensing, with him coming up to, um, the inspection services and all the files.
And they weren't really digitalizing, they were just restoring. That's what they were doing, yeah.
And lastly, I mean, Dave Kin, Plymouth County, I know the Opera Funds, that Plymouth County is only releasing fifty percent of the funds currently. I did speak to Plymouth County today and he said, because a lot of towns are not applying right now and they are not going to re- more, release more funds until towns start applying for things.
Oh, wow.
So once towns start applying, he said, they might be another, they're likely, is the word he used, be another, um, round of funding.
So what did he say? They only got fifty percent of the funding?
So we only have fifty percent. West Bridgewater only had, all the municipalities right now only have fifty percent of the funding that they received.
So we have to ask for...
That's the allocation. That's not what Plymouth County received.
Correct.
Plymouth County received a hundred percent.
That's only the allocation. So right now for West Bridgewater, it just, uh, we have like six hundred and eighty-six thousand. And until we use that money, there won't be anything else right now. Unless, he said, once more communities start to apply for different stuff, that they will likely release some more money, but right now...
That's not what they told me the other day on the phone. I talked to Sandy White through, uh, yester-, uh, within the past week. And what she told me was initially, they received fifty percent of the funding. They've received the other fifty percent. But what I had told you about where they took that vote because they wanted to, I don't know what the proper word is, but I'll use reserve, fifty percent for regional projects, they were still on that mind, that mindset. However, if we submit a project that needs to be done, and I use the word vital, they would consider it.
They would consider it.
So...
As long as it's not, um, Tom O'Brien said they would consider it as long as it's not a substantial amount. Like, right now, West Bridgewater only has six hundred and eighty-six thousand, so...
So it should be for one, but it should be for one point three million. It shouldn't be for six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. They, they, they took a vote. I mean, we went with them to, to hold this money, for lack of a better word, because we expected it to be distributed to us pro rata based on what we were supposed to receive. I think for them to ta-, for, it's, it's our water issue. I mean, it can't get more vital than that. So for them to take a vote to arbitrarily take fifty percent of each town's money and they decide what the important regional project will be, when we have nasty water and a PFAS issue, that's not right. And, and they're giving different information to different people. I think in a, a letter needs to be sent out to them from our board and they need to respond to us in writing because the communication over the phone changes depending on who's, who they're talking to. Because the communication over the phone changes depending on who's, who they're talking to.
Yeah, I agree. Was it last meeting we agreed to send a letter and try to get other towns on board?
Right. I mean, even if we, if we don't have the time right now to get other towns on board, I think we need to send something to them, and they need to respond to us in writing. Because every time there's a phone call, it's a different story. I mean, I think that's ridiculous, that if we submit something that's gonna cost us seven to nine million, they only wanna give us six hundred and eighty-five thousand, and it's our water. How much more important than that can it get? It's really irritating.
Make sure our letter goes out.
Do we need a motion?
We already made a motion last meeting to send a letter. Um, but I don't think.
I don't know, did you, do you know if you sent the letter out? No.
Yeah, I don't, I think David was wanting to talk to other towns first.
Okay.
But we need a response from.
I do know that Dave did reach out to other town managers, and, um, out of the twelve he reached out to, no one had, no one had an idea about it, so.
And that's what I was saying, when I was on that Zoom call, and I brought up that, what their vote was, all of the other towns that were on the call didn't seem, no one had any comments. And David's already checked around, and none of the other towns that he checked with knew that this was happening. They expected full funding too.
Do you think that's all I have?
All right, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.